The August 11th, 2015 City Council Meeting is called to order. We have our invocation by Reverend Mashad Evans, Senior Pastor of St. John AME Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance from the distinguished counselor Valerie Abbott from District 3. Please stand.
Let us look to the Lord in prayer. Gracious God, it's into your presence we come this morning, and as we come, we say thank you. We thank you for waking us up and allowing us to see this day, this day that you have created. Therefore, we will rejoice and be glad in it. God, we ask your blessings upon this city council meeting. We pray, oh God, that you would lead us, for we certainly cannot lead ourselves. Guide us, oh God, and only the way that you can. We pray, oh God, that you would bless this great city of Birmingham, Alabama. We pray, oh God, that you would bless this state, this nation, and this world. We lift up in particular our school students who have returned to school and who are going to school, continue to protect and provide for them. We pray for our students, our teachers, our power professionals, our principals, and all those who work in the art and industry of education. We ask God that you would be with us. Lead us, and we shall be led; keep us, and we shall be kept. Continue to crown our heads with wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we might lead your people well. Have your way, oh God, and whatever you choose to do and however you choose to do it, we'll be careful to say that it was you that did it, and give your name all the praise, for it is in the name of Jesus we do pray and ask it all. And the people of God said together, "Amen."
(Inaudible)
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Lundey.
Here.
Councilmember Parker.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. President Pro Tim Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Rafferty. Councilmember Scales. Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Good morning, Mr. Clerk. Do we have a motion on the minutes from May 5th and 12th, 2015?
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Abbott, Roberson.
All right, voting should be up. That vote should be up. To your left.
All right. That item passes. Minutes are not ready from May 19th through August 4th. Let's move the consideration of the consent agenda, Mr. Clerk.
Consent agenda starts on page 2. With items 1 through 4. Page 3. We have items 5 and 9 on consent. Then we skip over to page, let me get it here, 20. We have items 10 and 12 on consent. Page 21. We have items 13 through 15 on consent, with 14 and 15 being added to the consent agenda. And 16 removed from the consent agenda. Page 22.
What'd you say, 16?
Removed, not on consent.
No, it's still on consent.
Still on consent?
Yes.
Okay. Page 22. We have items 17 through 22 on consent. That's 17 through 22. Page 23. Items 23 through 27 are on consent. On item 25, the address should be 13, 14, 15th Way Southwest. That's 13, 14, 15th Street Southwest. Page 24. Have items 28 through 32 on consent. Page 25. We have items 33 through 35 on consent. Then we skip over to page 27. We have items 38 through 42 added to the consent agenda. And item 43 is on consent, and the correct wording should be on your screen. There's a change in the wording. "To assist the city council with framing external public relations message by facilitating focus groups and gathering data to support the same." That's for item 43. Page 28. Items 44, 45, and 46 were added to the consent agenda. And you have several addendum items. And on the addendum, we have items 50, 51, and 52 added to the consent agenda. I think that's it.
All right. Do we have any council members who wish to speak to the consent agenda? Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda and marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. All right, we have a mover and a second. Lundey Parker.
All right, voting should be up. Vote should be up. Uh, it's unanimous.
All right. That item, the consent agenda passes. Mr. Clerk, call up item 11, please.
Item 11. Which is on page number?
20.
20? Yeah. "In ordinance, authorizing the mayor to execute a project development agreement with Camtech, under which Camtech will expand its operations in the city on to approximately 74 acres of city-owned property located at 1600 Sterlite Drive, 4401 Red Wing Lane, Birmingham, and on to 4 acres of companion property located at 1590 Sterlite Drive, Birmingham. Camtech's expansion will include a project to establish a new manufacturing facility of approximately 148,000 square feet for the production of aluminum automotive casting parts for major automotive original equipment manufacturers in the United States. The expansion has the potential to increase to 400,000 square feet in the future. The city will convey the city-owned property to Camtech for a consideration of $1 under customary terms for economic development, project to this scope, and subject to the city's acquisition of the companion property. The city will also convey the companion property to Camtech for a consideration of $1 under the same terms as the conveyance of the city property."
Mr. President.
Second. Lundey Roberson.
Lundey.
Item is before us. Mr. Mayor, good morning.
Yes. Good morning, councillors.
Good morning.
For some time now, the city of Birmingham, along with the state of Alabama through the Commerce Department, represented this morning by Secretary of Commerce, Mr. Greg Canfield, along with the Jefferson County Commission and the Birmingham Business Alliance, have been working feverishly on this project with Mr. Frank W. Irvin III, Director of Government Affairs of Magna International Corporation. This morning, we have a brief presentation by Mr. Irvin and his staff to show the council exactly what this project means, not just for the city of Birmingham and Jefferson County, but the entire state of Alabama. At this time, I would like to call up Mr. Irvin. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, councilman.
Morning.
Morning.
I want to thank you for allowing us to come again before this council and present what we think is one of the greatest positive packages that Magna has done in the United States this year, or last year, or any year for that matter, and in the recent future. So I'd just like to take a few minutes to tell you about Magna, to tell you about Camtech, to give you a little bit of history of Camtech, but also, I believe that it is time for corporations and companies to tell you about the return on your investment in us, and tell you what it means, not only to the state of Alabama, Jefferson County, but also to the city of Birmingham. So I'd like to start out by just kind of giving you one figure, and I'm not going to really tell you much about this figure. I just want to put it out there for a minute, but that figure is $1,303,000,000. And as you think about it, we'll go through a couple of things. First thing is, I'd like to tell you a bit about who Magna is. Magna, we have 58 years of growth. We were founded in Ontario, Canada, by our founder Frank Strannick. We are ranked as the largest supplier of automotive components and parts in North America. We're the second-largest in the world. We're the most diversified auto parts supplier in the world. If you were to have a vehicle in front of you, and you would say you want to source as much as you can from one supplier, we can source 82% of the vehicle. We don't make tires. We don't make brakes. But that's about all we don't make. We supply every major auto manufacturer in the world. That includes the big three, but also what's called the implants, but we do it all over the world. Obviously Ford, General Motors, and Chrysler are our biggest customers. If you look at our world footprint, Magna presently has 133,000 employees in 29 countries. Our revenue in 2014 was $36.6 billion. We have 318 manufacturing plants around the world with 87 product development and engineering centers. In the United States, we presently have 62 manufacturing plants, and we employ 23,175 Americans. When you take a look at why things are going the way they are and how things are progressing in this market, I think it's important that we articulate to you where the auto industry is going, as opposed to where it was. As everybody knows, in 2009, the auto industry took a dive and was down to 8.6 million units of production in North America. That was from 16.9 million units in 2007 in North America, so we really took a dive. What you can see from the trend of where this market is going is that the government made the right decision with General Motors and Chrysler. Ford obviously took some loans and put in some long-term debt, but they made the right decision too, because we knew that this industry would come back. We knew it had to come back. And you can see from the trend that it is going to get back. And we were projected, after the 2009 downturn, not to come back to 16 million units until 2017. You can see that we were at 16.2 million units in 2013. We project in 2015, we will get to 17.5 million units, with a long-term projection of 2021 to be at 18.9 million units in North America, which is as high as this country has ever been, or than North American has ever been. But now, let me tell you what really is interesting to you, or what has to be interesting, and that is what Camtech is, and what Camtech does, and why you should care. First of all, let me give you an overview of Camtech and who we are. Camtech was established in 2008 with our purchase of the company of Ogehaure. Presently, our products there are body size stampings and door openings, roofs, inner structures, door inner panels, door outer panels, large welded assemblies, and closure assemblies. We presently ship at over 150 truckloads of finished product from Camtech every day. We produce 75,000 stampings a day. We produce 23,000 modular assemblies a day, and inside the plant, there are 2 million spot welds done every day with welding equipment. So let's look at our investment since we bought Ogehaure in 2014. Total investment in Phase 1 and Phase 2 since, from 2008 to 2014, and capital invested in that facility is $473 million, with the last time I was here before you to present, and we were making about $150 million investment. We have done that. That is complete. It is up and running, and is running very well when we bought the plant that we bought, which was the old Del Monte plant, and that plant is up and running. Everything is going so good that we decided we might as well spend a little more money, all right? So now we have a projection in a new facility that we'd like to build, and this is what we see in 2015 to 2020. First of all, in the land that we're talking about right now, which is the green part across the street from the present Camtech facility, we intend to build 148,000 square foot facility to do high-pressure diecasting, which is a new technology in automotive diecasting in this country. We also intend, because of the growth of our business at Camtech, to expand Camtech itself and put new machinery and new capital into Camtech. What this will mean for this area and District 1 is, and the city of Birmingham and the state of Alabama, is 354 new jobs between now and 2019. We will ramp this up. It will start basically in 2016, be ramped up and finished in 2019. The total expenditure that Magna intends to invest in this facility, in Birmingham, Alabama, between now and 2013, if you take the $16,290,000 that the new plant's going to cost us to build, and an additional $513,127,000 that we intend to spend. That comes to a total investment in Birmingham, Jefferson County, and Alabama between now and 2019 of $530 million. As I said, the new construction will be 148,000 square feet, and the expansion will be somewhere when we get down the road, about 200,000 square feet. So now we come back to that number, and I ask you to think about that number at the beginning. That number of $1,303,000 is what Magna Camtech has invested in Birmingham, in Jefferson County, in Alabama, already invested since 2008. So I'd like to just also tell you a little bit about our employment growth, because I think that's important too, because the main thing is, what are you doing? What's your return on the investment that you make in a corporation like Magna and a corporation like Camtech? In 2009, when we bought Ogehaure, we made one promise to you, and one promise on. That promise was to retain the 290 people that were at Ogehaure at the time, and add 467 people to that total by 2014. If you look at the trend, we added that number of people by 2012. In 2014, our employment at Camtech was 852 people. From 2009 to today, we are now at 922 employees at Camtech today. And if you take what we intend to do with this new investment, that will take our projected employment in 2019 to 1,276 employees. So the question is, where do these people live? Where do they come from? I went in and I did ask the people at the plant to help me do a survey to figure out where the people that work in our factory, in our facility, where do they live? Where are they? Are they from the community? What we did is we found out that 37% of all the employees that work at Camtech are residences of the city of Birmingham. And surrounding the county, if you take the total county of Jefferson County, we calculated that of Jefferson County, our residents equal about 78% of all of the people that work at Camtech. So again, what does this mean? I just want to give you some figures about what this also in the return on your investment, because this is a real return on your investment. We went back and looked at calendar year 2014. In calendar year 2014, Camtech purchased in goods and services from Alabama-based vendors $255 million. If you take that out over a five-year period, we have purchased from Alabama-based vendors more than $1 billion in goods and services. Last year, Camtech's payroll was 52, I'm sorry, Camtech's payroll and wages paid to Alabama employees was $51.2 million. In addition to everything else, the investments we make and everything else, this plant consumes 800,000 pounds of steel every day. Every day. And 120,000 pounds of aluminum is consumed in the plant every day. And believe me, once we expand, and once we build this new plant, that consumption will almost double. I thank you for your time. I thank you for your consideration of me, and I thank you for your consideration of Magna Camtech. Thank you very much. President, in the words of Joe Biden, "This is a big hooping deal." Well, something like that. And there are a lot of people, a lot of involvement with a lot of different entities, of which Alabama Power played a significant role, but more importantly, I want to thank the staff of our Economic Development Department, led by Ms. Lisa Cooper, for shepherding this through the process. Please give her a big round of applause. As Frank has indicated, this, Camtech has not only had a major impact on the economic growth and vitality of this community in the past, but going forward, it will have even greater impact. And I would like to thank Frank, the entire organization of Magna International, and everyone for making it possible to invest here in the city of Birmingham, the county of Jefferson, and the state of Alabama. Open it up to any questions that the council might have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, you know I am extremely ecstatic, Mr. Mayor, that this is located in District 1, so you know I was going to call you up, Mr. Irvin. I want to say to you, as the council member of that district, how thankful I am that Camtech has made the investment that you've made. You've been an excellent corporate citizen in our district, and we need you. We want you here. And I'm thankful that you decided to not only locate in 2008 to that area in our industrial park, but you decided that you wanted to expand. And so I was more than elated. So to those that you have to give an account to at Magna International, you have done an excellent, superb job in making sure that every council member knows exactly what this project entails, the jobs that have been created here in the city of Birmingham, and most of all, your personal investment as a company. I do want to thank, I see Mr. Canfield here from the governor's office. I see the Jefferson County Commission, and our own County Commission District 1, and I think that's Ms. Wanderling Gavan I see on the end. But I want to thank everyone from Mayor's Office of Economic Development, Ms. Janice Dothard, Ms. Cooper, Griffin Lassiter, the Law Department. I'm a grateful soul this day that you all have expanded, and you're investing a half a billion dollars in the city of Birmingham, District 1. So I'm a grateful soul today. I just wanted to tell you that. And you've done an excellent job. Again, I want to applaud you. You've done well, and you've made sure that we understood you're not asking for a handout. All you want to do is make an investment in the city, be a good corporate citizen, and you've done well at actually selling us to other folk to let us know why you're here. So thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very grateful to you as well for being on board. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Frank, what I'd like to do is to ask our Secretary of Commerce if he would please come forward and make some comments, because without the state of Alabama and its participation, this would not have happened. So, Mr. Canfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Birmingham City Council. It's good to be back in your chambers. It is a rare occasion that we have an opportunity to visit one another about an investment from a company of this magnitude. This investment represents one of the largest and most significant capital investments by an automotive supplier in our state's history. And I don't know how much you know about Magna, the parent company, although, Frank, you did an excellent job of outlining and giving us the overview, and you've moved from third-largest in the world to second-largest in the world in almost the blink of an eye. The last information that he had given me, they were third. So it's good to see that Magna is having great success, and it's for making moves like making the decision to expand here in the city of Birmingham and plant their flag. What's most significant about this, in terms of the technology, is that automotive manufacturers around the world, and particularly in North America, are faced with the challenge to make their automobiles lighter and still maintain the quality and durability, but they have to meet ever-increasing standards for fuel efficiency. And this process is going to be an integral part of making that happen for the OEMs that Camtech serves. So this technology is critical for the success of automotive manufacturers, and I'm telling you that because that bodes well for the investment and the longevity of the investment that's being made here. I don't believe that we will have seen the last expansion. Now, I don't have a promise from the company, but I do note that what is happening is that we have a company with the parent Magna and the operating company Camtech, who've enjoyed great success from being here in the state of Alabama, and in particular, in Birmingham and Jefferson County. And companies who enjoy great success tend to want to reinvest where they're most successful. So I applaud you, and I applaud Magna, and I applaud Camtech for being great partners in the state of Alabama, in Jefferson County, and here in the city of Birmingham. And this doesn't happen easily, and it doesn't happen without a lot of players participating. And I'm going to repeat much of what Mayor Bell has said, but without the city and the partnership from the city, from the state, from Jefferson County, without the partnership, including Alabama Power, without the partnership, including BBA, without the support of EDPA, projects like this don't happen. So let's continue to work together and see greater things happen, and great investments and job creation come to this region. Thank you on behalf of Governor Robert Bentley. I appreciate the opportunity to address you.
Mr. President.
Okay. Councilwoman Scales.
One last thing, and I do want to thank our Chair of Economic Development, because without the support of the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, which is Councilor Lundey, without the support of Budget and Finance Chair, Ms. Valerie Abbott, we wouldn't have this item before us today and be as excited as we are. So I'm very grateful to you all as well, because it is a team effort. And without the council being on one accord, along with the mayor and those individuals that have been named today, we wouldn't be here where we are at this juncture. So I want to say thank you to you all as well. Thank you.
All right. We have a mover and a second. Mr. Clerk, we're ready to vote on this item.
Voting should be up. All right, that vote should be up.
All right. That item passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead.
If you would, recess the council meeting so we can be joined by the County Commission, Secretary Canfield, and others, along with the council, for a press conference on the blue wall.
Yes.
Back in the back.
We have a motion to recess.
Second.
At the caller chair.
Yes, at the caller chair.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. This meeting will be recessed, and we will convene at the caller chair. Mr. Clerk. You ready?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Parker. Miss one. Councilmember Lundey, apologize.
Here.
Pro Tim Roberson.
Present.
Councilmember Rafferty. Councilmember Scales.
Here.
Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Thank you. This meeting is called to order. Mr. Clerk, Councilman Scales?
Yes.
You had a time-sensitive presentation that you wanted to... Let's move to suspend the rules for the presentation.
So move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Councilman Scales, you want to just come to the podium?
Yeah. Well, good morning again, and I don't want to delay the time. First of all, I wanted to say I'm very excited. My principal is going to be coming up soon, not today, but talking about Huffman High School being...
School being the sixth in the state of Alabama in terms of academics. And so we're extremely excited about that announcement. But without further ado, I have asked for some good, nice friends to come and present themselves to you. We do have on this upcoming Friday our Sixth Annual District One Music and Movie Festival, and so I'm going to call up this beautiful young lady. She was featured on The Voice. Some of you all may know about, I was about to say Judge, but he was a judge, but Pharrell. And this beautiful young lady has an awesome voice. And then right behind her is a gentleman by the name of Young Vocals that I found out this morning is one of the president's favorite. So from one musician to the other, I present to some and introduce to others, Ms. Toya Jones.
I'd like to say good morning to you all. I'm gonna sing a little short song by one of the greatest singers, female singers of all time, and I, Whitney Houston would be her name, so. If I should stay, I would only be in your way, your way. So I'll go, but I know I'll think of you every step of the way. And I will always love you, will always love you, you, my darling you. Thank you all. God bless you. Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it humbly. I'm gonna sing one of my favorite love songs, Love Ballad. Here we go. I, I never been so much in love before. Ooh, and what a difference, mm, a true love made in my life, so nice, so right. Loving you gave me something new that I never felt, never dreamed of. Something changed, no, it's not the feeling I had before, and oh, it's much, much more. Thank you.
Come back up Vocals. And where did Tanya go? Toya, come on. So I wanted to make sure that you all and those who are streaming can be able to see the quality of what we're bringing. That's one of the things that when I ran for office that I talked about is that I would use my skills, my talents, and my abilities on behalf of my district. So one of the things that I've been fortunate enough to do growing up as a girl is I am the daughter of a veteran entertainer. And so when you look at the type of talent that we're bringing, it is first-class. And then in addition to that, we have Logan. So if you like rock, we bringing Todd Jones and Todd Simpson, as a matter of fact, and Mojo Child. And so we got pop-rock, and then we even bringing on a 2015 Grammy nominee jazz musician that is actually located in District One, and her name is Ms. Sherri Reeves. Have an excellent Kid Zone activities. So I know that Counselor Abbott, you have to hold your nose, but guess what? We also have the Birmingham Zoo, McWayne Science Center, childcare resources, and we got this big mobile truck. So those of you all who like to do karaoke, and you want to dance and exercise along with it, we got that for the grown folks and the little folk, okay? So that takes place on this Friday, August 14th. Gates open at five. We get started at six. It's absolutely free, open to the general public. And Ms. Abbott, we do expect for you to come and line dance with us, because I think it would make world news. Thank you, everybody, and I appreciate it. But we're gonna do some other things, and like I said, to make sure that people know about this event. So shortly thereafter, we'll be doing something on Fox today. And look out, everybody, here we come. God bless you. Thank you.
Mr. Pro Tim.
Counselor Scales. Counselor Scales, I'm gonna pull one of your numbers. Come back, please.
Yes.
John. I just want to commend you on your efforts with this event. You've always shown that entertainment can bring people from all walks of life together to celebrate great times. And I, I've known you since, you were a little girl, but I've known you for a while, and I'm just glad to see you bring your professionalism to your district, to offer citizens here in the city of Birmingham another source of entertainment and opportunity to come together. And you all sounded great today. You have a great cast. John, I've known for a long time, and I'm so proud of him. He wasn't wearing hats like that when I first met him, but he saw me wearing them, so he started wearing them too. So you all keep up the good work. Proud of you, Counselor Scales. And I won't be there, do the travels this weekend, but I know it will be a success, and I look forward to seeing my colleagues doing the Cuban shuffle or something going on out there. Thank you so much.
As a matter of fact, the weather is expected to be very, very good, so no excuses. Yes, sir, we got it.
Well, I'm gonna try my best. You probably know I'm hopping, but I really, put your red hat on. That's what I'm talking about. I love to see a black man with a red hat on. It looks real nice, and you sound good, and I really want to be there, Scales. I'm gonna try my best to come, and you know when I come, I always bring two van loads of the citizens out of District Six that wants to do things. We don't like sitting around. We like entertainment too, so I'm gonna try to get my groups together, but we can bring two van loads out there, even if I am not able to make it because of twisting my knee.
Well, I do want to say thank you to the council again. It means a lot to have you to support what we do. And last but not least, being that the mayor has come back into the chamber, I always say that I want to present to the mayor that our district, we support you, and most importantly, we want the folk in our district to enjoy where they live. And it takes you to be on board with us, and I'm on board with you to make that happen. And that's what it's all about at the end of the day, enjoying the community where you live. And that's why I want to make sure that the best-kept secret on the east side of Birmingham, located at 950 Springville Road, didn't I tone it down, Ms. Abbott?
Counselor Abbott.
So I expect to see you there. And again, I want to thank this council for $500 million project expanding itself in District One. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Counselor Scales. Yes, dear.
Could you please come back to the podium?
Be gentle now.
I will, I will, I will come to your event if you promise not to try to make me dance or sing, because everyone would leave.
Well, that's okay. And guess what? We're not gonna make you do either. We're just going to, as they say, we're going to be in your presence and your fragrance and ambiance, and we're gonna say, Rapunzel, you don't have to let down your hair, just come on out. All right. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Let's go back to the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor. Yes, Mr. President. I just have a few other comments for this morning's council meeting. This past week and weekend, there were several events that I want to acknowledge. The My Brothers Keepers Ready Day One event, which took place at the Boutwell Auditorium, had a large group of barbers as well as gift packs and backpacks that we gave out to hundreds of students, and I want to thank all of, all of the participants for making that a successful event. Also, More Than Conquer's Church, their annual event, the Respect Rally, there must have been over a thousand people there, if not more. And Reverend Steve Green and the entire More Than Conquer's Church do an outstanding job of not just entertaining the children and the, and the parents, but really helping them get their kids off to a great start. So I want to express my appreciation for that. Eric Bledsoe with the NBA, he had an outstanding event this weekend that also got our kids prepared and ready to go back to school. And Counselor Roberson, Pro Tim Roberson was there and a part of that event. Want to thank Eric and KJ, and who, Marcus, DeMarcus cousin for really being there. I think I can take any and all, all three of them in a one-on-one, but I didn't want to embarrass them. But I want to express my appreciation to them for the outstanding job that they did at Railroad Park this weekend. Sadly, we lost some outstanding citizens of Birmingham. Reverend Thomas Gilmore, the pastor of First Baptist Enslie, passed, and he was a civil rights icon, the, one of the first black sheriffs in the state of Alabama. In fact, I think he was the first black sheriff, and never carried a gun, never carried a gun. He passed the other day, and our heartfelt sympathies goes out to his family. Mr. James Turner, the husband of Mrs. Yvonne Turner, a civil rights icon, has passed as well. We want to send our condolences to Mrs. Turner, as well as the entire Turner family. Mr. Oscar Simmons, who was a stalwart in my fraternity, Cap Alpha Psi fraternity, he was a philanthropist. He gave a lot of money, not just to Cap Alpha Psi, but to a number of organizations throughout the city of Birmingham. And Mr. Glenn Todd, who was an activist in the city of Birmingham, has also passed. So my condolences goes out to all of the families. We will miss each and every one of those individuals. And, Mr. President, thank you for your time. Thank you, Counselors. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does anybody have anything for the mayor before we move on with the agenda? All right. Mr. Clerk, let's go back to the first item on the agenda. I think it's item three.
Six.
I'm sorry. Item six, yes.
Item six. A resolution relative to the application of Four Seasons Events LLC for a club liquor class-two license to be used at Four Seasons Events LLC 719 Graymont Avenue North, Birmingham, in hearing of all its parties.
And call up item seven as well.
Item seven, a resolution relative to the application of Ashira Allen for a Division One dance permit to be used at Four Seasons Events LLC 719 Graymont Avenue North, Birmingham, in hearing of all its parties.
All right. Detective, you want to present this to us, please?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. President, we have an application for a club liquor class-two license for Four Seasons Events Center LLC, 719 Graymont Avenue North. This application is also in conjunction with a Division One dance permit.
Okay. Can you just give us the incidents at this location?
Mr. Chairman, there were three incidents at this location. The most recent incident was on July the 6th, 2015. There was a criminal mischief incident report. On March the 14th, 2015, a miscellaneous incident report was made, and on February the 15th, 2015, there was a false alarm at this location. Again, three incidents for 719 Graymont Avenue.
All right. Do we get a mover in a second?
Mr. President, like to move the items?
Roberson, Parker, all right. Is the applicant present? Can you tell us, state your name and address for the record, and tell us what you're doing at this location?
Ashira Allen, 719 Graymont Avenue North. We have built the clientele to target and to better serve the clientele and age group that we have built, and it will require me to have a private license for members only. Memberships are granted to only members age 25 and up, and are chosen by invite on written applications.
All right. Are there members of the council who have any questions? Mr. Pro Tim?
I don't have any questions. I like to speak to the establishment. This is one of the most profound adult, professional establishments I know in the city of Birmingham. The management does an excellent job. Matter of fact, the fried okra is some of the best fried okra I've had throughout the state of Alabama. And the chicken is good, too, in the Council Austin. Okay, you've had it all. So, but I, I appreciate the way it's ran, appreciate professionalism that's within the establishment. I know I'm not the only elected official in this chamber that's been to that establishment, enjoyed some of the events that have taken place there throughout your opening. So I just want to commend them on their efforts to establish this license. I think it's due. I think it's more of an adult license where you can have memberships in 25 and older, and it's one that the good people of Birmingham can enjoy. So thank you for your leadership and what you all are doing there at that establishment.
All right. Are there any members of the council which should speak to this item? This is a public hearing. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak for or against this item? Any members of the public wish to speak for or against this item? Oh, Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask anyone who's on the committee, there's no recommendation. Is that due to a lack of a quorum at public safety, or was it due to some other reason?
Counselor Parker?
I would imagine it's probably maybe due to a lack of quorum, because it's not a thing that's...
Turn your mic off.
I'm sorry. I would imagine, well, Detective.
Counselor, because this was a club liquor class-two application, private club, they just wanted to send it with no recommendation before the council.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the vote for the neighborhood, because I don't have that either.
I recommend this go to the vote.
Who's on the committee?
Parker. Hoyt is the chair, but he's not here. I think they, I think they were the...
Can we just ask them if they went to the neighborhood?
You, you all went to the neighborhood.
Went to the neighborhood. The vote was eight for, zero against.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know. I just don't have it. All right. We're ready to vote on both items. Yes. I can't vote, but I say yes. That vote should be up. That item passes. Next item should be item eight.
Item eight, a resolution relative to the application of parking enforcement systems incorporated for a towing service and vehicle immobilization license to be used at 2101 Sixth Avenue North, Suite 114, Birmingham, to operate two wreckers and one pickup truck on the streets of Birmingham.
We have a mover in a second. Move the items, President. Roberson, Parker. Right, do we have any speakers to this item? Can you tell us what you're doing? State your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Christopher Mayer, address is 2101 Sixth Avenue North, Suite 114, Birmingham, Alabama, 35203. The license is for non-consensual towing and vehicle mobilization inside Birmingham.
All right. Do we have any members of the council which should speak to this item? Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, and I just wanted to ask the reason again for no recommendation from the committee. Does any, was anyone there?
Detective. Detective.
Good morning.
Morning.
The item went before public safety, and it was sent to City Council by Mr. Hoyt. I know why it was no, a recommendation by the councils. But this particular company has seven incident reports, and I believe that was one of the reasons why Rafferty, Counsel Rafferty sent it before council, because of the incident reports that was turned in.
Can you tell us those incident, can you give us those reports?
You actually have a copy of them. I don't know if you, you don't have a copy of them or not, but I do have my originals. But out of the seven incident reports, three of the reports was the parking lot was in compliance. Another report, the insurance company took care of the claim. And two of the reports are the victim was refunded their money, and one of the refund is still pending. So I will know by Thursday if it's, if he refunded a bit of his money. And the other, the applicant was paid half of the total. So that's seven incident reports from this company. First of these reports was June of 2013, and the last was July this year of 2015.
Go ahead. Any other council members have any questions?
Any other council members have any questions? All right, Ms. Clerk, ready to vote.
All right, voting should be up. Uh, that vote should be up.
That item passes. Next item?
I think it's item number thirty-six. Which is on page twenty-five. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Larry Foster, Officer CPR Weed and Seed, Mayor's Office, Tampa, Florida, $783.64, May the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend the National Conference on Preventing Crime in the Black Community. Gregory Jones, Assistant to the Mayor Mayor's Office, Atlanta, Georgia, $475.72, June the twenty-first and the twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Roundtable Conference on American Studies and Issues. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $1,658.78, March the fourth through the sixth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend People and Place Community Conference. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, New York, New York, $2,075.79, April the nineteenth and the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Clinton Global Meeting. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Washington District of Columbia, New York, New York, $2,310.11, May the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Foundation Partners. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Denver, Colorado, $2,058.70, June the seventh through the eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Clinton Global Initiative. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, $481.43, June the twenty-sixth and the twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Meeting. Sheila Tyson, Counselor, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $2,309.22, March the eighth through the eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, to attend National League of Cities. Sheila Tyson, Counselor, City Council, San Diego, California, $1,092, June the twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Noble Women Conference. Item thirty-seven, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Jonathan Austin, Council President, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $2,609.46, June, September the fifteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Congressional Black Caucus. Alicia Brown, Social Media Manager, Mayor's Office, Atlanta, Georgia, $1,875.8, August the eighteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Social Media Strategy Summit. Courtney Hunter, Chief of Staff, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $2,866.36, September the fifteenth through the nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Congressional Black Caucus. James Roberson, Pro Tem, Council, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $2,336.60, September the sixteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Congressional Black Caucus. Brittany Sharp, Director, Public Information Officer, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $2,270.92, September the fifteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Birmingham Business Alliance, Washington Fly-In. You got others? Addendum? All right, forty-seven. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Jonathan Austin, Council President, City Council, Huntsville, Alabama, $561.89, March the fifth through the seventh, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Leadership Alabama, Nicole Collins, Officer CPR Weed and Seed, Mayor's Office, Tampa, Florida, $1,062.41, May the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend thirtieth National Conference on Preventing Crime in the Black Community. Renita Higgins, Director CPR Weed and Seed, Mayor's Office, Tampa, Florida, $1,174.41, May the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend National Conference on Preventing Black, Preventing Crime in the Black Community. Kiara Morrow, Public Information Officer, City Council, Houston, Texas, $2,258.26, May the nineteenth through the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. William Parker, Counselor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, $501.42, July the ninth through the tenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Environmental Protection Agency Meeting. Susan Perlmutter, Community Resource Officer, Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, $1,409, May the nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Silver Scarborough, Assistant to the Mayor Mayor's Office, Tampa, Florida, $1,163.68, April the twenty-first through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend National Forum for Black Public Administrators. Silver Scarborough, Assistant to the Mayor Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, $1,104.1, May the nineteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Charles Singletary, Sergeant CPR Weed and Seed, Mayor's Office, Tampa, Florida, $671.64, May the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend thirtieth National Conference on Preventing Crime in the Black Community. Sheila Tyson, Counselor, City Council, Arlington, Virginia, $462.7, March the twenty-fifth through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Fourth Annual Women of Power National Summit. Willie Watson, Site Coordinator, CPR Weed and Seed, Mayor's Office, Tampa, Florida, $783.64, May the twenty-sixth through the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend thirtieth National Conference on Preventing Crime in the Black Community. Item forty-eight, a resolution approving the following expense accounts. Jonathan Austin, Council President, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $2,376.35, May the twentieth, June the fourth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend American Council of Young Political Leaders. Courtney Hunter, Chief of Staff, City Council, Paris, France, Stuttgart, Germany, $6,546.51, June the twelfth through the nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Paris Air Show. Cheryl Kidd, Administrator, City Council, Denver, Colorado, $2,087.88, June the seventh through the eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Clinton Global Initiative. Cheryl Kidd, Administrator, City Council, Paris, France, Stuttgart, Germany, $4,937.12, June the twelfth to the nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Paris Air Show, April, autumn. Director of Communication, Mayor's Office, Paris, France, Stuttgart, Germany, $5,223.92, June the twelfth through the nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Paris Air Show. And item forty-nine, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Jarvis Patton, Chief of Operations, Mayor's Office, Washington District of Columbia, $1,442.10, September the sixteenth and the seventeenth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Birmingham Business Alliance, Washington Fly-In. Kimberly Rafferty, Counselor, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, $1,827.83, September the fifteenth through the seventeenth, to, to attend Birmingham Business Alliance, Washington Fly-In. I think that's it.
All right, we have a mover in a second?
Second.
Parker, Roberson, ready to vote, Ms. Clerk?
All right, voting should be open now. All right, that vote should be.
That item passes. Next item, call up Mr. Clerk, items, which will be, should be the last item, right?
Um, addendum thirty-three through fifty-seven.
Fifty-three through fifty-seven, yes.
Yeah. Item fifty-three on page three, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Dalvin LLC, Columbia, Alabama, for the purchase of abatement of weeds and debris junk from overgrown lots in Quadrant Three. As needed at the unit price on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of six months and month-to-month thereafter, for a term not to exceed three years, subject to the availability of funds for the Public Works Department. This being the lowest remaining bid submitted meeting specifications. Item fifty-four, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of James and Company Property Resources Incorporated, Birmingham, for the purchase of the abatement of weeds and debris junk from overgrown lots in Quadrant One. As a secondary contractor, as needed at unit price on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of six months and month-to-month thereafter, for a term not to exceed three years, subject to the availability of funds for the Public Works Department. This being the lowest remaining bid submitted meeting specifications. Item fifty-five, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Naro's Lawn Service, Birmingham, for the purchase of abatement of weeds and debris junk for overgrown lots of Quadrant Four. As needed at the unit price on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of six months and month-to-month thereafter, for a term not to exceed three years, subject to the availability of funds for the Public Works Department. This being the lowest remaining bid submitted meeting specifications. Item fifty-six, a resolution approving the bid of Nelson Family Lawn Care, Birmingham, for the purchase of abatement of weeds and debris junk for overgrown lots in Quadrant One. As needed at the unit price on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of six months and month-to-month thereafter, for a term not to exceed three years, subject to the availability of funds for the Public Works Department. This being the lowest bid submitted. And item fifty-seven, a resolution accepting and approving the bid of Think Safe Incorporated, Birmingham, for the purchase of abatement of weeds and debris junk for the overgrown lots in Quadrant Two. As needed at the unit price on file in the office of the purchasing agent for a period of six months and month-to-month thereafter, for a term not to exceed three years, subject to the availability of funds for the Public Works Department. This being the lowest bid submitted.
All right, we have a mover in a second?
Move the items, President?
Roberson, Parker, Mr. Pro Tem?
I'd like to speak to the items and I'm just glad to see us utilize this from the mayor's administration and public works. Some of our smaller businesses within the communities. I recognize some of these companies that are listed today to start the process of what we voted on as for a budget to eliminate some of the overgrown lots in different quadrants throughout. My question is, what, how soon will this begin as it relates to this process and dealing with some of the overgrown lots and in a different quadrant?
Counselor, as soon as the resolution is signed by the mayor and the.
Can you state your name?
Ron Nichol, purchasing agent. As soon as the resolutions are signed by the mayor, as soon as requisitions are entered by the Public Works Department and a list of the lots for each quadrant that the vendor will be given to begin with, they can get to work. There shouldn't be any significant delay. And I'm sure that everybody's going to work expeditiously to get this going as quick as possible.
Well, that's, that's good news and thank you for your response from the mayor's administration. I'm just excited to see this process begin. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I was looking at the bid tabulation and it's not clear. Some of the organizations that bid lower than the ones who were awarded. I mean, how, how were the decisions made? Did these other people not meet the criteria? Did they not own any equipment or have any people?
There's really several things going on here, Counselor. First of all, a vendor can only be awarded one quadrant. Even if they bid, have the lowest bid for some other quadrant, once they are awarded a quadrant, then they're sort of out of play for the, the rest of the quadrants. So that's one thing playing. We had one vendor who bid, most, most of his bid was six cents and five cents for one quadrant. However, they didn't submit all the necessary requirements with the bid, so their bid was, was thrown out. I think we also had another bid that was thrown out because they did not submit the required bid bond. And then also we have in play here a situation where we had the option to award to more than one vendor for a quadrant. And we did actually do that in one case with the company by the name of James and Company. They had a, a reasonable bid amount. As you can see, all the bids were between about five cents and, and six cents. And then all of a sudden, if we were to have awarded a second secondary bidder, we would have jumped up to fourteen cents. The decision was made that that was way too much in light of the fact that all the other bidders were within the four to six cents range. So there was a lot of different factors that played into this and how we came up with, who we came up with.
Yeah, and it just wasn't clear from looking at it, what, how the.
It, it, it isn't.
Like, there's no notations on here that people didn't meet the criteria. It's just a tabulation.
That's true. It, it, we have that on our copy here. We have a lot of notes.
Yeah, I see. You have a lot of notes. Maybe you should have given us a copy of yours.
It took a lot of juggling to, to figure out which ones were actually left.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered. Thank you.
Do we have any other members of the council? Counselor Lundey?
Thank you, leadership. Uh, to Mayor Bell, uh, thank you for putting this in motion. It is the office of the mayor that oversees the implementation of this most needed service. So I'm glad to see this service brought about in accepting and approving of the bids. That being said, Mayor, when can we expect to see a grass cutting schedule? When it, in pertaining to these quadrants and the plan in which we are going to go about this?
We will be having a meeting with the Public Works Department as well as, um, my key staff members to develop that. And within the next seven to ten days, you should have a list. We've been very methodical as to how we approach it. As was stated, we're going by quadrant. We're going to try to hit those areas that are in the greatest need. And so we're looking at that, how we can set that up to present to the council. But all lots will not be cut overnight. So I don't want anybody to think that the lot next door is going to be cut tomorrow. That, that's not going to happen like that, but we will get that list to you.
Okay.
You know, I'm glad you specified that, Mayor. I think once we commit the plan to paper, it can set people's expectation so that they'll know just exactly when to expect the lot next door to, to be paid some attention. So I think the plan is paramount over the next seven to ten days that you bring forth to, not just this council, but to our constituents. I think they deserve that. Uh, my next question, sir, is, uh, in regards to the three hundred-plus lots that were queued up for this year, do we have enough contractors per these bids to get to all of those lots that are in queue by June thirtieth of next year?
That's probably not something I can really answer. And Public Works can maybe give us more of an idea of how many lots the vendor gets at any one time. And as far as the length of time they have to cut, seems like back when we did this by contract about three or so years ago, they were given a group of lots and they had somewhere in the neighborhood of two weeks to, to clear all of them. Then they were given another group. You don't want to inundate them all at once, but by the same token, you don't want to give them a massive amount of time to do them either. So you want to keep them going. That, I think, would have to be Public Works would have to answer that to, to get the answer you're looking for. We just basically do the POs against the vendors once we get the information from Public Works.
So I would like to address that question to Public Works if possible.
I think they could probably better answer that.
Okay. Counselor, we, we are working to, of course, there's lots of different sizes. And they will be establishing groups to the different vendors as they can, as they have the ability to, to take care of them. So it's a work in process of getting all that put together. So, but we will be making a report to the mayor so he can pass that report on to the council and. Okay. What's the estimated timeframe on that report? Uh, as the mayor said, we should, we should have some ideas and things together with him within the next ten days or so. So we should, we should be able to better answer your question by that time after we've had time to group everything up together and, and know what we're working with. Okay, all right. Well, on behalf of the citizens, I thank you, Mayor.
All right, do we have, oh, Counselor Skiles?
Thank you, Mr. President. So my line of questioning is along that same line, but help me if I didn't recall. I think I got a keen, sharp memory, but just in case I miss it, if you would correct me. I thought that when we passed this money in terms of the six and a half million dollars, that one of the things that we said that we would not do is to move forward on those items until we had received exact locations of where these lots and what had been identified was to occur. So I don't want to put you on the spot, Mr. Minnefield, because I don't think you were in that meeting. But if anyone recalled that meeting, am I right or wrong?
Yes, we have.
Oh, okay, huh?
You're correct, Counselor. That's what we said and we do have them. They gave them to us when, Mr. Patton, a few weeks ago?
Probably three weeks ago.
Okay, because if.
Big maps.
Yes, the maps with the dots.
All the dots.
We have the addresses, all of those things. I, I know you weren't in that meeting though.
Okay, all right, because I was wondering, is that the, the committee of the whole meeting? Where that was, and I'm being very specific because he, here's the deal, Mr. President. What I'm asking is, I want to make sure that these are not random lots that we're doing. That they're lots that the people in our district. that they're lots that the people in our district actually want and need to be cut. The last thing that we need, and I think I said that in the committee of the whole meeting, the last thing that we need is for the city to go cut a lot that wasn't the real issue, and the issue still remains. That's why I wanna be very on point about it, because I know that, Mr. Mayor, and I really appreciate the robo-call that you're sending out to the citizens to let them know that relief is on the way, but I'd like for my citizens to have addresses, so they know exactly when you say, well, the city's gonna clean a lot, they wanna know where is the lot located, and that's how transparency and everybody begins to feel like I am a part of government, because they're paying for it, but they wanna know where it's located. And as a council member, if I'm saying that, you know, I'm not for sure, and then, more importantly, I'm one that I ride the district myself, which means if it's, and we don't have alleys over in District One, but if there is a lot that's not the main issue and the one that we really ask to be cut is overlooked, then I'd rather swap so that we can get what we need to have cut, cut. That's all that I'm saying. So when you get this list, I certainly would be interested in getting it in electronic form so that we can't say we misplaced it and any of that, Mr. Mayor, and then we can move forward on it. And when those contracts are awarded, I mean, is the council gonna be permitted to know who those contracts have been awarded to? Is that one of the other things we talked about, Mr. President?
What we're doing is what's before us right now. Those aren't the contracts, those are the bids.
So those are the only companies that we're gonna look to
Right now.
Do the lots at all?
The only ones that's before us.
Period?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. What we gave the council before was all of the lots that need to be cut, but I think the council is requesting now is the order in which they will be cut. Now, in order to be efficient, we can't be jumping all around either the district or the city, cutting lots here and there. We wanna be very systematic. If we have a crew in an area, we want that crew to cut every lot in that area, as opposed to cutting specific lots, then jumping somewhere else. And I think that's what we need time to work out, how we bundle those lots, so that when we go into an area, we hit that entire area. Some lots may not be, have high visibility as other lots, but in order to be efficient, we've gotta do it that way.
And just to add to what the mayor is saying, in that same meeting, Mr. Patton, and I think it was Mr. Patton and, I can't remember, maybe Charlie Williams, but if there are lots that you know of that are not on that list, they asked for you to provide that address for those lots, too.
And, Ms. President?
Is that correct, Ms. Patton?
Yes, sir.
And in closing, let me just, only one thing that I will say, the difficulty in doing that is because over in the eastern side of Birmingham, there's a lot of undeveloped land that by law I know that they don't have to maintain, but it's still making our community look a horrible mess. And because of that, it's hard to get an address on property that's undeveloped unless, if you want me to provide, and I don't mind doing it, if you want me to get the property next door, if it happens to be a residential dwelling, you'd like for me to get that address and say next to that address, so that you know. Otherwise, I wouldn't know.
Counselor, lady, I can tell you flat out, we are not gonna cut undeveloped land. The only land that we're required to and we will cut is land that a structure is either is on or have been on, but to go into a far, what's it, far-stated area, or area that has natural growth and never been developed, we're not gonna do that.
Well, then, let me ask you this. Bear with me, Mr. President, and then I'll say this in closing. So then, let me ask you this, Mr. Mayor. If we know that it's overgrown, and I will give you an example, on Carson Road, right off Carson Road where you go up to Arthur, the old Arthur Elementary School, when I say that this grass is more than two people or two human high, two humans in one, it's extremely tall, and this property owner has not done anything, I mean, the visibility, if you try to come down that road, Mr. Mayor, to even turn left, to exit, right to enter, it's a mess. And so in cases like that, then, Mr. Mayor, do we continue to just let it overgrow? Are we gonna try to contact the owner of the property as the city, since we do have adjacent properties that are right there at those locations and it's depreciating their property value?
If the property is overgrown and it blocks the vision of drivers, we will cut it back, but we will not cut that lot.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes. Are you done, Counselor?
Well, yeah, because what I'm trying to, really, Mayor, what I'm just saying in short, is that is there a way that the city can better protect the citizens in a situation like that, meaning that can the city contact the owner, and then if we have to cut it, at least find that owner so that they understand we're serious about they're gonna have to come back and cut those lots, since we can't cut it, and I understand that, but what can we do?
Madam Counsel, we just have a difference of opinion. This is, any far-stated property, we will not cut that property. If it presents a traffic hazard, we will cut it back, I think, either it's twenty-five feet, we will cut it back twenty-five feet, but we will not go in, nor will we require an owner to go in and clear a far-stated area.
Counselor Tyson?
What, in District Six, we had, not to that state, what you're saying, 'cause I know you have a lot of big, old, big empty lots with big, old trees growing, but we do have a lot of empty lots in the community with the building, helping the community. We have started a ladder riding campaign, and they are actually, I wish Mr. Cologne hadn't left, they have agreed to sell the city a couple of their real estate pieces of property that we're in the process of buying now, because of the campaign and the community development have supported that. I'm talking about, when I say cheap, I'm talking about like twenty thousand dollars cheap, huge, huge pieces of property that the city has ended up gaining, and we also have churches that's buying lots around the churches now, vacant houses and lots and stuff, and community development is working with us on that. So that is an outlet, President Austin. Even with large pieces of property she's talking about, it's several real large pieces of property, and it is legal, and the citizens have joined in with us, and they are selling it, and I think that's solving a whole lot of problems that we are having in our district.
Counselor Abbott, your second time.
Yeah, and I just, I know that, Mr. Nichol, you probably mentioned quadrant two, but I didn't hear it. I noticed we passed one, three, and four. What happened to quadrant two?
They're think safe. Think safe, see?
Okay.
Yeah, item fifty-seven is quadrant two.
Okay.
Think safe.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any other speakers? We're ready to vote.
Voting should be up.
That's it.
That vote should be up.
That item passes. Mayor, again, thank you on behalf of citizens, as Counsel Lundey said, and all the rest of us up here. We appreciate moving forward quickly on starting to cut these lots, and I know we'll be coming back soon with the demolition program, too, but we appreciate it. It's definitely gonna make a difference. All right, that concludes our council agenda. We have, we've done our, done our presentations. It's moved to suspend the rules for our speakers.
Second.
All in favor, let me know my senior.
Aye.
First speaker.
Uh, Pearlie, is it Lawhorn? Lawhorn?
Lawhorn.
I don't have a call, Mr. Pritchett.
Okay, yeah. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Pearlie Lawhorn. My address is fifty-seven Moon Grove Drive, and that's Birmingham, Alabama. We're here on behalf of District One and District Four, and some of our issues have already been talked about, but I just wanna address, well, first, wanna address Mayor Bill and the council. Mayor Bill, we got your robo-call, and we thank you for your robo-call, but our concern is, like everybody else, is about grass and abandoned houses, and you said that you all were getting to it, but one of the problems is that we have the overgrown property that always are there and it'd be there for so long, also as far as trash and brush. We know they say they pick up every two weeks, but sometime it's out, most of the time it's out anywhere three weeks, and this time, this has been the worst that I have ever seen it out of thirty-one years in Kilos Springs and the eastern area. I have never seen so much trash and brush out. It's getting so now that when they sit the mattress out, you got the toilet stews out, and it's smelling. So if we can get something done about trying to get it done a little bit quicker, maybe the people won't sit it out as early. We don't get the newsletters anymore, so most neighbors don't know when to sit it out, and it sits, I like to say, months, sometime months or longer. Also, in our area, one of our concerns, we don't have a chain grocery store. We have Walmart, and that's basically the only place in that area that we shop, and people are complaining that we want grocery stores, if some kind of way that we can get us a chain grocery store in our area, we really would appreciate it. We just need to get more business. On Robinson Drive, which is the street that leads Walmart that goes into the neighborhood, that street needs resurfacing, it's so bad to now people is taking a different route trying to avoid that road because of weird tail your car. Also, we had a complaint about a house at five twenty-four Camilla, I think it's Camilla Road, I guess the road to drive, Camilla Road. That is a vacant lot, and it's been sitting there for a long time, and they have neighbors, it was a house there from my understanding, and it's so overgrown till it's about tallest trees, if you all can take that in consideration. And like I say, so since you all already talked about the abandoned properties and the overgrown properties, if we can just get some way where we can get the newsletters back started, I know that's a problem, but that way the neighbors can know exactly when the trash and brush pick up and what's going on with the city, 'cause it seemed to me like when we was getting newsletters, it wasn't looking as bad, but it's happened, like I say, it's been the worst that I've seen lately.
Okay, your time is up, Ms. Lawhorn.
Okay, and thank you, but as I take my seat, I just want to recommend the police department for the work that they do in the fire department, and I will pray as well to the policeman that got beat in the eastern area, and so we want to let you all know that all lives matter.
Madam President, before you step away, get with Mr. Minnefield and those specific locations where the trash and garbage have not been picked up, give him those locations.
I hope we have a long sheet of paper.
Madam President, just get with him. Whatever you have, give it to him, okay?
Okay, I will.
Mr. President?
Counselor Scales?
Hold on, before you all leave, come on, Ms. Smith, come on back. I wanna say this, because Counselor Parker and I do share the Kilos Springs community, and it was so important, Mayor, for them to be able to hear from you today. A lot of the concerns that come up because council members are attending these neighborhood meetings, and I know that I go at least a ninety-eight percent, matter of fact, they really put me at the bottom, with Mr. Freddie, at the bottom, 'cause they say I'm up there talking too long about what we do at City Hall, and not in a negative manner, but in an informative manner, but they wanna know these things, Mayor, and it makes a difference when, as a council member, I'm speaking, but you can see faces instead of us just saying, would you please cut, would you please cut, would you please cut, and then it's not being cut, and then they think that council, the council is not being responsible or being responsive to them, so that's very comforting to know, Mayor, that when they get the word from you and you give directives to your staff, that means a lot to them, and I just wanna make sure that you know that, that they adore you, too. I adore you, and they adore you. They just wanna see some relief over in Kilos Springs and in the eastern area. We do need businesses, and we have, that's why we keep talking about those eighteen-wheeler trucks and some of these man-made truck stops that we have, because we got some folk that got some money in District One. That's the only reason why these businesses like Camtech can thrive over there in that area, 'cause the money is there. We just want the city service to match it. Well, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you this morning for listening to them and assigning staff, and so the folk in Kilos Springs, they can look forward to when they get to their fund day, they can say, I talked to my mayor and my counselor, and they got it worked out. So I just wanna say that to you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you all for coming this morning. Don't let this be your last time I see your face at City Hall, 'cause we see each other frequently, but at City Hall, I thank y'all for taking out your time for your schedule today.
Madam President, I think the last time I came to your meeting, which has been a few months ago, I thought I gave out my personal cell number, and I'm publicly gonna give it out. You ever have any problem, you know you can call me. You know you can call me, don't you? You know that.
Okay.
You know you can call me anytime.
And I will call you. I'm gonna get your cell number.
I gave it to you before. I'm gonna give it to you right now. Come on over here so I can give it to you.
All right, next speaker.
Sherman Sterling.
Mr. Sterling? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Sherman Lee Sterling. Good morning, council members. Everyone, I'm located at seventeen eighteen Teakwood Lane, Birmingham, Alabama, proud citizen of Birmingham. I'm here this morning on behalf of Reggae in the Park, which is a series of free concerts that SLS would like to begin October the fourth, in one of your newly constructed parks at Greenwood Park at Talapoo's exit. It will be an opportunity for SLS Express to expand our cultural music and experience to other, we call undeserved communities, who have not really learned to appreciate reggae or probably hadn't had a way to figure out how to do that. Our goal is to get down into these undeserved areas and do these concerts free, with the condition that each citizen of that community or surrounding community is invited to come out and share in our culture experiences. The park has been and will be an example for what you all have done on the south side, what is done on the north side. The people can come out and get exercise, think about their health, and enjoy activities such as reggae in the park. I put a request into each council as a citizen and my council, Mrs. Scales, making sure you all know that we thank you all for all y'all have done and what you all are doing in the community. I'm just one of the many citizens that have something to say. I would ask the mayor if he would give his undivided blessings and support, ask the council members and all of you all for this event. It is October the fourth, six P.M. till nine, and it is a way of thinking and giving back to the community for what y'all have done for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We appreciate what you're doing in our community.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Willie Jenkins.
Mr. Jenkins?
Mayor, city council, I want to announce that the Carver High School alumni, Mr. Bill had to tell you, but we're getting ready for the annual alumni association, BSDA, Friendship, Ten Twenty-Four Hall, Walker Chaffler Road, Friendship, Foot and Deel. We have now a white linen party on the, this coming Saturday. We're getting ready for the reunion at all Carver High School. Get ready, get ready for the annual picnic coming first Saturday in October, but this is our annual dance, we gonna have a white linen party, and I'm ready, been ready for a long time, so we getting ready for it this coming weekend, so we asking all the Carver High School to School to get ready this weekend. It started nine to one, oh no, uh, this coming Saturday, foot and deal, ten, ten, um, twenty-four old Walker Chapel Road. Also, we having Revival coming up, Old Street Baptist Church, August the twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth, uh, Revival coming up. Uh, we want all the city council and y'all to come to the annual, uh, Revival coming up, uh, this year. Uh, let you, uh, I can't pronounce his preacher name, but it's, um, Melissa Dr. Ca- can't pronounce his name, but, uh, anyway, it's gonna be, we always have Revival every year by this time, Reverend Connor, Old Street. And this is, uh, and I would like to announce that, uh, that my prayers go out to Mr. Washington. His brother got killed in the car wreck and, uh, yeah, Mr. Washington and my prayers go out to the Washington family, you know, and I want to say, uh, may God continue to be with the Washington family. His loss, his brother, Christopher Washington, and my prayers go out with him. And also I'd like to say happy birthday to Mr. William Parker. Have a, and, uh, and, uh, had your birthday celebration last week, we, I got you a surprise. And also Mr. uh, London, he had his birthday too last week too. Mr. London had his birthday. I was sad to have the birthday to both of y'all. And I would like to say, uh, this, uh, this, uh, and, uh, getting ready, like I said, we getting ready for our annual reunion. We looking for everybody to come out to this coming weekend. I'm ready for, I'm ready for this weekend. So Mr. Bill, I want you to ask, if you'll be busy, come on out there to foot and deal, I'm gonna have my white linen suit, I'm gonna have, I got a new hat, cap, I'm, I'm ready for this coming, this coming, that's my cap, that's my cap right here. Yeah, I'm, yeah, 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 so I'm ready for, um, this coming weekend. We've been ready for a long time, so, in Carver, get ready for the annual picnic coming up. And so we asking all the mighty Carver Rams, the District Four Cottageville, William Park. Also want to invite you, Mr. Parker, if you could make it out there this coming Saturday at, um, Walker Chapel, you know, at this coming Saturday. And I would like to say, if you could make it, you know, I'll be looking for you. And I've been waiting on your, uh, movie date, when you say you gonna have it in September. So I'm waiting on that, you let me know when that gonna be. In, uh, September, I'll be ready to come out to, uh, to the annual, uh, movie date in the park.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker, Mr. King.
James King.
Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
I ain't started yet. James King, thirty-five fifty-four Church Street, Dolomite. This morning I come, uh, to talk to the people of Birmingham about a ambush that we had last week by a elitist group of people who decide they don't want to talk to the public and they decide to make decision in secrecy. And they collude together in secrecy to deceive the people and they rush it in at the end of the contract, kind of like what they did to Jefferson County with the sewer deal when they phlegm flammed us and all the banks did it. Council members, you did the same thing to the people last week. I had a city worker call me this morning and said that I've worked for this city for thirty-five years and I don't make fifty thousand dollars. I barely made thirty-two thousand. And with all due respect, you have hoodwinked the people of Birmingham and for the fraud that you have conceived in secrecy, you, you will be accounted for. Uh, we have to look at some of the things that have happened. When you talk about raising wages, you had some people come to you the other week and they wanted you to formulate a ordinance that would give the, the underclass, the poor people that working for seven dollars and twenty-five cent an hour raise, conceive a ordinance and you fail to even address the situation. We gonna study it. You gonna keep studying it and I'm telling you, you gonna be waiting and waiting and waiting because of it. But when it comes down to your self-engrandizement, you hurry up, you rush it in, it's slicker than slick, it is quicker than quick. It was conceived by half with dimwits and nitwits, dumbbells, bird brains, who thought they could pull this? But guess what? Two years from now, people, you won't be getting away with seventy-five, not fifty thousand folk, seventy-five thousand. They ran an ad in the newspaper, they added on some more. But you couldn't talk to us because you were afraid. It's a slick and some of you have been near jailhouse time. Other you, other of you are, are under secrecy and the mayor has to have a million dollars worth of security. And don't you ever go to Ferguson, ever go to Ferguson, Missouri and tell people about peace when you had two people shot up on the freeway. How dare you? Better look at that mirror and all the rest of you who are cheating and deceiving the people. I'm telling you right now, they gonna rise up, they gonna clean out and this has happened again and he went out the door with them. They gonna rise up again and they gonna sweep this whole place in clean and they gonna come forth and bring somebody to fumigate this place to eliminate the stitch.
Next speaker.
Cedric Hatcher.
Mr. Hatcher, state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Good morning, council. My name is Cedric Hatcher. I reside at twenty-three hundred Fifth Avenue North. Uh, first let me say to the mayor as well as the council, y'all forgive me if I use the word damn this morning, on, two weeks ago, I was kind of called out for that. I'm still in renovation, uh, still having a process done and every last one of y'all are too. Not cause I said that, cause Paul said that in Philippi's one, verse six, uh, I got a preacher right there, one of y'all say y'all preacher. You know, he said he ever got a good work in you, a performer to the coming of Jesus Christ. So all of us still in process, including your parents, if they still living. The Pope, the President, the man with the big old stomach, Mr. Mayor, you know that you was over there with the Buddha man. Yeah, all of us still in the work in the process, y'all. You know what I mean? So I don't come down here to point personal fingers out at y'all and all that kind of stuff, you know what I mean? Now come on, let's leave that alone. Now let me get to why I came down here. I want to thank the mayor and the council for the work that we've been seeing in the city. I know it's gonna be a little different this morning, I want to thank y'all this morning for the progress we've been seeing with the weed cutting and overgrown lots and all that kind of stuff. Man, it look great throughout this city. I mean, I saw those guys working in the rain last week. What an improvement, but can I tell you, if you got any kind of grass, you know the grass grow back in one week? Oh yes it does. You know, soon as it rain, it might grow back in two days. And so we're calling out as community, y'all, we want some development going on, just like we do around the corner, you know downtown around now, on Second Avenue and Fifth Avenue, not on Fourth Avenue, but on Second Avenue and Fifth Avenue, over a billion dollar worth of construction going on. And so as a speaker for the people, cause I be out there around the people all the time. See, I can't be my brother's people, my brother's keeper if I ain't around my brother. So the only way I'm gonna keep up with my brother, I gotta go around my brother to be my brother's keeper. I can't keep up with my brother hanging around dick bar my tongue. Oh, I'm about to close, hold on one more minute, I got a few more in here. Let me tell you something, man, what we need in these communities, y'all, we need average grocery stores, healthcare, we need these rec systems back open back up. What do you think these young people gonna look up to if nothing going on in their community? All they got is some little slick round there, some little hustlers, some in the game, you know what I mean? Convince them, come on, join me. They ain't got nothing to look up to. Their neighborhoods ran down to the ground. And so not only stopping with the cutting that grass, go over there, Mr. Mayor and council and put something in these communities, man. We don't have a grocery store, we don't have a healthcare, they shut Cooper Green down. We ain't got nowhere to go. Those old people don't have a grocery store and you know, a dozen eggs in them local markets cost almost four dollars for one dozen eggs. And that's a rip off. Now these are the same people that campaigned for y'all, that told them signs and walked from door to door, hollering, vote for so-and-so, vote for so-and-so. It seemed like my first thought would have been, how can I help my people? How can I help my people? You know what I mean? If I'm gonna help all, I help all of them, make the plane rolls off for everybody, you know what I mean? Because it's just sad, man, people crying out, you know what I mean? I ain't come to talk about that little thing that y'all did all day, I let the media keep on talking about that. I'm talking about helping my people. Helping my people in these communities. Don't stop with cutting that grass. I'm begging y'all, go through that community, look around and see that these people need help. You know what I mean? Who they gotta look up to? Ain't no pastor coming in the community, you gotta come to his church. Only time he coming out when they stopped them tithing offering, then he gonna be out there with bros said with a satan saying, then, give me back my tithing offering. Or when they stopped men's day and women's day and big hat day and chicken day, it ain't none of them days in the Bible. Now now one of them. So when we go back to talking about being my brother's keeper, y'all, let's keep our brothers for real. Let's stop doing all this phony stuff because you can fool some people sometimes, uh, but you cannot fool the people all the time. Now you seem to like, stand up for your right. I'm closed.
Next speaker.
Lavandia Bryant.
Where you gonna get that Bible out here, bros?
Dance company, Bryant.
State your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Lavandia Bryant Square. I live at fifty-two seventy-seven Bestin Road in Iandale, Alabama. I'm here this morning on behalf of Natifa Dance Company Outreach Incorporated. First of all, I would like to say thank you for the letter of recognition that I received on May sixteenth for celebrating twenty-two years of keeping cultural arts alive here in the city of Birmingham. Um, we service throughout the Birmingham school city, Birmingham school city schools with traditional West African dancing and drumming. We also tour the schools with our performing company where we do, once again, traditional African dance. We have a program located at Harrison Recreation Center on Saturdays and, um, the program was started in October, registration was started in September. I just wanted to come out just to briefly thank the city of Birmingham. I'm originally from Birmingham, was raised in Brooklyn, New York, came back to Birmingham in eighty-six and saw that the city was starving for cultural dancing and drumming. And for over twenty-two years, I've been keeping it strong and alive and just want to say thank you too for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker.
William R. Muhammad.
Mr. Muhammad. Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Uh, my name is William R. Muhammad. My address is four eleven Lorraine Street. Uh, I'd like to say good morning to the council and the mayor. Uh, I came down, uh, because my daughter called me this morning and she said, Daddy, did you hear about the council giving themselves a raise? What's that about? And I explained my position to her and after I finished talking to her, she said, I'm glad you talked to me about that. And I said, well, I think I better go down to the city council because I have always been in support and encouraged the council to have a raise because I look at it as a paradigm shift. Differences of opinion and debate are part of democracy and you should be open to people who have differences of opinion about your actions because you should be able to defend your actions. But when I look at the facts, the biggest thing that jumps out is they said, this is a part-time job. Well, I say it used to be a part-time job. The old paradigm was that white businessmen, and I tried to keep race out of it, but I'm a race man, uh, white businessmen and white bankers, white lawyers, et cetera, used to come down here for four hours and make decision. They had a, a staff of council assistants that was under the council administrator. But now the new paradigm is that you have districts. They didn't have districts then. The little money that they were being paid was just pocket change for them because they had businesses and they had profession. But now you have districts and you have to go to district meetings. You have aides who make three to four times what you make. You have neighborhood meetings that you have to go to. And I just want to end on this note, I don't know where I am in terms of minutes, but I will never forget that I went to Regions Bank on West Valley Road and I saw my councilman at the time, Rodrick Rawl, as a clerk in that bank. And this man was the president of the city council. I hid because it made me feel some kind of way to see my representative, my president of city council who set over a three-hundred-million-dollar budget, working as a clerk in Regions Bank. And I'm, it's nothing against Rodrick because he was humble, he had humility, but I felt like the position of council person was lowered when you get the kind of money you get. And I, I, I support you and I say be strong in that because my council person, not by district, but by friendship, is Councilor Tyson. And I know I called on Councilor Tyson this week to help a sister that was homeless and that's the kind of call she get. And I know the work she do. And I will end by saying, I never will forget that the day after she got elected, we were out there protesting about the sewer and I looked around the corner and she was coming around the corner the day after she got elected to stand up there with us with signs. So I'm saying that you'll call on to do more than what the old paradigm says. So I say be strong in your decisions. You are honoring the position of government as far as I'm concerned.
Next speaker.
Mr. President. Mr. President.
Morning, council.
Good morning.
I'm in a good mood today.
State your name and address.
A V. Shabazz, twenty-two eleven Bestin Road. I got something for you guys. Over here, over here. After everybody get their, um, handout, then I want to talk about it. It's a pointed reflection followed by a request. Uh, on those handouts, you see on the cover sheet, that's nineteen sixty-three Birmingham, Alabama. You'll see, um, black youth, black children being, um, arrested for, um, protesting for their humanity in nineteen sixty-three in Birmingham, Alabama. The irony of that is that this is six, fifty years later and black are still in the streets of Birmingham protesting for their humanity and going to jail for it. The real irony is that on that picture, it was all white police support force. Now we got our own people taking us to jail for protesting for our humanity in Birmingham, Alabama. I think that's a pointed reflection, uh, everybody should look at and have a problem with. Um, on the backside, after that sheet, we have questions, same questions I asked three weeks ago, I have yet to get answers to. I think as, um, city councils represent the citizens of Birmingham, that you have an obligation to answer the questions that are asked. We had a little heated little situation up here because I wanted answers, so I waited three weeks to get answers. I've gotten no answers from anyone. So again, I submit the same questions to you and I would ask that you give me a expectation on when we can get the answers to those questions. And lastly, um, Mr. Robeson, well, not lastly, two things. Mr. Robeson, um, we spoke before council meeting and I was trying to address a concern, asked you a specific question about, um, council rules and you brushed me off. You sent me away, you dismissed me. Like my concern, my question to you about council rules, you didn't want to answer. You told me you don't know nothing about it and you dismissed me. That's the type of attitude which is the problem here in Birmingham. I am a citizen of Birmingham. If I ask you a question as a council person about council rules, you should be inclined to answer and not dismiss me. I didn't ask you in a wrong way, I asked you in a very nice way. And in closing, last thing, and, um, piggybacking off what my brother, um, Mr. Muhammad said, I, I agree with Mr. Muhammad. I didn't know what he explained, but in his explanation, it's very clear that you guys should get paid because the workload that y'all do. But I will also add to that, that the responsibilities to your job or to this position has to be, um, warranted by that pay. It can't be that you get that pay, but you're not fulfilling your obligations, your responsibilities and your duties that you have the attitude that Jay Robeson just had right there. I think he needs a pay cut. I think he needs to be, his, his need to be rescinded because that is not the attitude reflective of a council person and it's not reflective of anybody getting a raise. So with that, um, I would like to get an answer to that question. When should we expect a answer to the questions that we presented to the council so we will know when to come back and get those answers? And my information, um, anybody want it? It's two oh five, this is my cell number, two oh five, two two two, four six zero two, two zero five, two two two, four six zero two. And anybody can call me at that number and with the answers to those questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Shabazz. Uh, first, let me correct you for the record, I don't get a raise. I'm not getting a raise, okay? That's number one. Number two is, when you in the chamber and there was a presentation that was being formulated, I just got here, you had asked me regarding somebody, Ms. Dixon, Dr. Dickerson being removed from the front seat. I said, I did not know. I referred you to the police officer to address that matter. So there was no attitude related to that conversation, sir? And as a city councilman, city, city council knows the quorum. And as a city councilman, city, city council knows the cormorant's chamber and understands protocol and policy. The policy was in order for me to refer you to the Birmingham Police Department regarding that individual, and I did not know. So I'll leave it at that. Uh, since you want direct attention to me directly, I don't mind that. I appreciate that. But at the end of the day, as a councilman, I do know the cormorant policy of this chamber, and as a president pro tem of this Birmingham City Council, I did, uh, comply with the policy as you, uh, were directed to the Birmingham Police to get that addressed. Thank you.
Councilor Scales?
It's not directly directed to you, Mr. Shabazz. So you can have a seat. I, 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 it was actually with the last comment, so.
Question?
No, I mean, that needs to be directed to the president. You just let me know, Mr. President, when you want me to speak.
Can I respond to him?
No, we're, you're, you're at the minute, so, but I'm going to talk to you after the meeting.
Alright, thanks.
Councilor Scales?
Let, let me just say this, because, um, I know that the president is going to take a moment uh, to explain, because he is the president of this council in regard to, uh, that raise. I've heard a lot of things, and one of the things that I always tell people, you bring yourself to the career. So if you lie, you lie, you, you've been lying. If you steal, you steal when you're in office. You, no profession should define you as a person. And I'm sure that this is to put the council on defense, but just for the record, because I understand we have media present, I want to make sure that we put the facts out as they are. I think the most selfless act that this council could have done, which was to look out for the next council, you would have to be overconfident and very arrogant to believe that you just going to automatically get back in office. So when I heard the headlines say, well, the council gave themselves a raise, you can't give yourself a raise. The state law forbids you to give yourself a raise. What this council did was took in action that, first of all, this council, as in the body, has not received a raise since nineteen ninety-seven. Every year, we fight for everybody to get a raise, because we value people. But we also know by the same token, that if people really believe that a part-time elected official is going to provide you a full-time service, then we would be telling you an untruth. When duty calls, Councilor Tyson and some of the other council members, they call me all the time in District One. I love my constituents. When do, i- if, if it's morally and ethically correct, they got my undivided attention. But at the end of the day, if I told you that if you looked at, uh, what the city requires as being part-time, you're talking about twenty-five hours or less. Just today alone, we have spent a total of more than four hours sitting here in this council chambers. And that's not counting when you get out here, that's before you even come out here on the dais. But you know that that's a part of the job. So really, only thing that I can say, and I've said this to the president, if we had to make an apology, ma'am and sir, is to say to you, well, w- we would love to sit down and talk to you about it. But this has no effect on us. Three percent cost of living raise has no effect on this council. Five percent merit raise that we did on last week has no impact on this council. Sixty percent insurance increase does affect the council and the mayor and all of the city employees. So when we talk about what one member says against the other, the only thing that I will say, because I'm not going to cast blame, everybody has their own prerogative. But I'll join you, Mr. Hum, Mr. Muhammad, when I say, it's a shame when you send a hungry boy or girl to do business every Tuesday on your behalf. And yet, you see them with some of the jobs that we have to do. And that's unfortunate, because it was never designed that way. The flip end to that is that if we're not careful, you're going to have some businessmen that are back in here, and women. And guess what else is going to happen? Will they really understand your issues and your concerns? So I'm not going to be on defense. I understand exactly what's going on, and I had this talk with my district a long time ago, because people didn't know we earned twenty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars before taxes. The public didn't know that. And once you all find that out, I found that people have really been a lot understanding. They really have. Because that's the part that don't seem so sexy for media, and I get that. But at the end of the day, we didn't give ourselves a raise, we don't get no increase, we don't have police security, we don't have all of that. Council members serve at the will of the people, but you best believe, when you come here, if any candidate tells you that they're going to only give you a part-time, uh, work effort in your district, be rest assured, you absolutely won't get nothing done, because you can't. You got to be accessible to your people. And the only way you're going to be accessible to your people, outside of your job, and in my case, to have a business, you're going to have to have your schedule very flexible. And I don't apologize for it, and like I said before, when you're completely honest with people, they really don't have an issue with it. The last thing I will say is this, uh, when people character assassinate, uh, council members, I think, and, and any elected official, I don't care if it's the mayor and the council, any elected official, I think that that's very unfortunate. The same respect that you deserve as a citizen, I agree. But I also know that elected officials also should have a degree of respect that is given. I always say, don't call me Honorable Counselor LaShonda Scales without honor. I always tell my staff, the mayor and I can even have a disagreement, but you'll never disrespect him. It'll cost you your job. You let me do the politics, but you don't disrespect him. You don't disrespect his staff, because I understand to whom much is given, much is required. And honor belongs, even if you disrespect or you don't like what a person says, you can still honor them. So I will end by saying, uh, I know that they are political operatives, they call all the radio stations, they are hired guns, and then they give out misinformation. But it's up to this council to tell its own story. And I'll say at the appropriate time, Mr. President is going to give that, and we'll be done with that once and for all. But again, it does not affect this council. And any person that has any kind of dignity about themselves, they're going to balance their work life, their family life, and their career. That's a smart person. So I thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, and I appreciate the people of this city and District One, because again, I do believe that a labor is worthy of its hire. If you don't think in four years that that person is working for you, you have the right to fire. You know what that right is? You go to the polls and you're unelected. That's all you have to do. Thank you, Mr. President.
Gilbert Clow. I think he left.
That concludes our speakers. We're down to Old and New Business. Um, Council Parker? No skills, do you have Old and New Business?
Yeah, I'll do it real quick.
Okay.
Very quickly, I just want to thank the citizens of District One, as well as the city of Birmingham, for a forty-minute opportunity to be their biz, their, uh, voice. Excuse me, I was about to say business. Um, and we do have our upcoming District One Music and Movie Festival, which is going to take place on this Friday. It's absolutely free, open to the general public. You do not have to live in District One to come on out and have yourself a good time. We are enjoying the community in which we live, and we want to make sure that you know that you are cordially invited. It's going to be at Huffman High School. The address is nine fifty Springville Road, uh, right off Parkway East. You'll hear us all nice and loud, but nevertheless, I think you're going to really enjoy yourself. We also offer a movie at Sunset. Uh, it's very wholesome. And again, bring your family, bring your children. We have an awesome Kid Zone activities that are planned. You saw some of, uh, the featured, uh, artists who will be there performing. Uh, but again, the objective is making sure that we have a wonderful time in the community, uh, where we live, work and play. Uh, our citizen concerns, uh, on Rose Drive, uh, in the eight-hundred block, we do have some brush and trash that needs to be picked up. Uh, we've already turned that in, Mr. Menefield. Also, on Thirteenth Avenue Northwest, uh, on the right-ofways, uh, we do have some debris that needs to be picked up. If you come on down Thirteenth Avenue Northwest, is when you're leaving Carson Road headed toward Thirteenth Avenue Northwest, you'll see where there are mattresses and some other items that are, uh, have been thrown on the right-ofway that needs to be removed. Also, fifteen twenty-two Wilderness Lane, trash and debris is le, on the left-hand side, needs to be picked up. Winchester, W-I-N-C-H-E-S-T-E-R Drive, that the right-ofway needs to be cut in that area as well. I do want to thank Public Works, Mr. Mayor, as you're leaving. Do want to thank Public Works for Ninth Terrace North. I understand that Mr. Patton got them over there cleaning up. And I want to tell you, thank you, thank you, thank you. It's in Mr. Parker's district, but got some family that's on hospice over there. They haven't been outside in a long time. I want to let you know that Mr. Mayor and Mr. Patton and Mr. Councilmember of District Four, that they are over there cleaning up, and I'm a ride through today. And, uh, and I, I pray it's all well, but I understand that they out there, they doing a good job. Uh, so I want to say thank you. Every time you all do something that we've asked you to do, I don't have a problem and I'm not prideful. I can come back and say thank you. So again, I wanted to make sure that we got that out there. And our neighborhood, uh, meeting for this week, we don't have one on this week, but we do have a plan for next week. So again, that's this Friday, August fourteenth, six o'clock on the dot is when we get started. Brasse, come on out there and give us some Jesus, and, uh, we look forward to seeing you there. Oh, Lord, that's alright. That's alright, just bring the cross while you're at it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilor Parker?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I'll be, uh, brief. Uh, the park board will be meeting, uh, next Wednesday morning at nine AM at Legion Field, uh, in the press box area. So anyway, so that's, uh, that's, that's the only announcement I have this time.
Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. The next Budget and Finance Committee meeting will be held on Monday, August twenty-fourth, twenty-fifteen, at four PM in Conference Rooms D and E. Submissions are due on or before twelve PM on Wednesday, August nineteenth. And I hope that everyone can meet that date and not be coming in on Friday expecting to add things to the agenda. It just isn't going to work. Um, I wanted to thank Public Works, because the grass behind South Town, St. Vincent's Hospital and the NIC finally got cut. I think the NIC actually lost some patrons, uh, in the high weeds, and they were probably found when y'all mowed the grass. So it looks really nice over there, and it looked really horrible before, so I want to thank you for that. The, um, this Thursday at six PM, the program and dedication for the Barbara Ingalls Shook Black Bear Trail dedication is at the Birmingham Zoo. So that's on Thursday at six o'clock. On Friday at six o'clock, we have Art on the Rocks at the Birmingham Museum of Art. And also, of course, Councilor Scales' District One Music and Movie Festival, which she has so kindly invited us all to. And I'm going to come watch y'all line dance and sing and all that stuff, and I'm just going to observe. Uh, Neighborhood Meetings tonight, East Avondale meets at six o'clock. I'm not sure whether Highland Park is having its meeting at seven or not, but the neighborhood president does normally send out an email to everyone telling them whether there's a meeting or not. And next week, there are no Neighborhood Meetings in District Three. It's a big surprise. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Council Tyson?
Thank you, President Austin. I have a mayor, Austin, mayor request. Residents are asking for the right-ofway to be cut along Francis Avenue into Mason City Neighborhood. The air conditioning is out at Harrison Park, and, and, and we have submitted, this was a couple of months ago, we had a grant to come into Harrison Park, uh, spark to the park. We can't even spend the grant money on the events that we have been doing for the last two years, because the air conditioning is not fixed. Our line dancing class, our weightlifting class, the young lady that came up here talking about her African dance class, um, all of the events that we have had, we have not been able to have. And, and we had a, 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 participation was built up to like two and three hundred people. So that is unfair to the, uh, community. It's already hard enough to get participation. We had it built up, uh, we was taking people's blood pressure, we seen changes in the community. And then all of a sudden, the air conditioning, um, break down, and then it takes two and three months for us to get the air conditioning fixed. And it's money in there, already in the, uh, account to get it fixed, but it just doesn't make any sense. And I would like that air conditioning fixed, before the citizens lose interest in that. Also, the lot behind fifteen thirty-seven Sixteenth Way Southwest is overgrown, and the residents, uh, have seen, have seen rodents and everything coming out of there. On sixteen twenty-four Denison Avenue, there has been trash and, uh, br- brush in front of a house for the last four weeks and in the back, and we need it picked up soon as possible. On twelve fifty-three Sixteenth Way Place, uh, Sixteenth Place Southwest, uh, it's overgrown in the front, and it looks, uh, horrible, and it's spilling over to the next property. Trains have been on the East Scooter Road, uh, coming by the college, the Baptist, Baptist Bible College. On Jefferson Avenue, on Fifteenth Way and on Fourteenth Place, the students cannot get to school. Mr. Patton, they have to actually wait. And when, if I go to, if, when I go somewhere and come back at one o'clock, the train's still sitting there. The students can't even go to school. They are missing the, they're, they're missing the days of school, because they are just letting these trains sit there. We called the number that's on there, we, we emailed them. Now they have started getting, saying little smart comments. But I know it's got to be, eh, we, we've got to be able to do something to make them move those trains off the track, because they, this, how, how are the people going to get to school? Because it's too far for them to walk around. There's, there's no outlet for them to walk around. They would have to all, walk all the way down to the Jefferson Bridge in order to get, uh, to get past that to get to school, and it, they hold, they, it'll take about two hours to get that done. And those are the announcements for the mayor's office. I wanted to announce that my Neighborhood Meetings on Saturday, August fifteenth, North Tittysville will be meeting at eleven AM at the Tittysville Library. On Wednesday, August nineteenth, Gray Mount will be meeting at, uh, four thirty at the Smithfield, uh, Library. Also, I wanted to just mention, um, the summit that we had at Parker High School. We had about seven hundred and fifty people that, uh, turned out. Courtney represented you. Excellent. She did a great job. And it was, I know it was very easy for her to speak on it, because she is a black young lady, and she knows what's going on in, in her community. We had two authors to come. We had John Stanrich, and he wrote this book, The One Great Thing. And it's a, it's a book about, you should do these things to be successful in relationships and happy in your life. Each person receives a book. Uh, he's a black artist, and he's, he's wonderful. And also, we had, um, Derek E. Vett, she came, and the students got a book, got one of those books. Nate Omen, Nate Omen, uh, what is her last name? Vernon, she was another author that came in with a book, uh, from DC. And it was on, uh, Fortune Five Hundred Jobs, uh, how to get those. And also, she had a training book on students, on, uh, inner-city students, on how to get jobs and be successful in life. We had Portia Williams from Atlanta Housewives. She did a great job. And her grandfather is actually, is, uh, the civil rights activist, Jose Williams. And, uh, we, uh, also, uh, did a, a clipping on him in a presentation. And, and Councilman Hart did that. He did a wonderful job. And Councilwoman Scales, she participated in the event also. But the things and the impact that was from this conference, they have been shone on the news ever since Friday. They have a, 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 and Congresswoman Sewell was there. At five o'clock today, they were actually showed on Fox Six, the, uh, presentation that she did in the conference. So this summit has reached a lot of people. They are still talking about it. And so they will be talking about it tonight at five o'clock. For the people who wasn't able to come, they can see some of the coverage there on that. And this is not the last one. Uh, I, I, we did one in May, we did one in August, and we're going to have one, uh, coming up again this year. In the beginning of next year, we will have another one. So this is something that we will continue to do in order to change the quality of life of the citizens here in Birmingham. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I do have, uh, Councilor Hoyt's, um, announcements from District Eight in his absence. Uh, his thought today is from Psalms one forty-five, uh, chapter one four, one hundred forty-five, ninth verse, "The Lord is good to all." He has compassion on all he has made." Neighborhood Association Meetings, Bellevue Heights Neighborhood Association Meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 11th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m. at Bellevue Elementary School. The next Public Safety Committee will meet, the meeting will be held on Monday, August 17th at 4:00 at City Hall here in the council chambers on the third floor. And the second planning meeting for the annual party with a purpose, District Eight event will be held on Tuesday, August 11th in the conference room D and E on the third floor here in City Hall. So please govern yourselves accordingly, District Eight, for those announcements from Councilor Hoyt. I know the mayor acknowledges numerous citizens that have lost loved ones, but I'd like to keep them in my prayers, but I'd also like to move for a resolution of sympathy for the Gilmore family at this time.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Move the item?
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, Mr. President. Our prayers are with the Gilmore family, the Turner family, Simpson, and I think it was Todd, with all the citizens that we've lost, good citizens here to the city of Birmingham. Councilor Tyson, we had a good time at Oakwood Place last week for National Night Out and it was a good event. I wanna commend Neil Allen, neighborhood president, with all the young people that were present there. Mr. Patton, and she acknowledged it, but Harrison Park Gym was hot and the AC unit was not working there and I think the work order's been to Public Works for a while now and we need to make sure we get that addressed. They couldn't have camp in there this summer due to the heat in the Harrison Park and Rec Center Gymnasium. So I just wanted to pass that along from the director there and he actually informed myself and Councilor Tyson regarding that matter. Lakeshore Parkway, Mr. Minnefield, it's getting kinda high, I'm not sure. Usually I have a good schedule on cutting the medians on Lakeshore. I always like for the Birmingham city side to look the best. And so if you all could get immediate attention to Lakeshore Parkway, the medians are overgrown right there in front of John Carroll High School, pretty much all the way to Bessom. I know that's a scheduled time, but they do need some attention. I know we've had a lot of rain as we are addressing grass cutting here in the city of Birmingham. I wanna say congratulations to one of our citizens who's been named by the U.S. Senate as the U.S. Government's Top Chemist. It's truly an honor. He's the son-in-law of Neighborhood President and Riley Travellik, Neighborhood President Dela Wright. That is Dr. Willie May. He was featured in the magazine for his efforts as one of the top chemists. The U.S. Government has named him as one of the top chemists actually in the United States and that's prestigious. The president acknowledged him for his efforts and he's a citizen from right here in the city of Birmingham. I think he was at Lawson State Community College a few months ago and spoke there, but he's one of our own and congratulations to you, Dr. Willie E. May, for an outstanding accomplishment with the United States government and being named a top chemist in the United States. There is a Planning and Zoning Committee meeting at 4:00 to Planning and Zoning Committee members. We have three items to discuss on the fifth floor today. Look forward to seeing you there. Riley Travellik Neighborhood Meeting will meet today at 6:00 on Thursday, August 13th. Hillman Park Neighborhood Association will meet at Victory Tabernacle Church of God and Christ and then at 6:30 on Thursday, West Brownville Neighborhood Association will meet at the Mary Doris Center. I do wanna congratulate and thank Eric Bledsoe, the former H. Parker point guard and star that's now with the Phoenix Suns for an outstanding event. He had a railroad park giving over 300 kids backpacks. DeMarcus Cousins, who is an outstanding NBA player with Sacramento Kings. KJ McDaniels, who's from right here in the Birmingham area by way of Clemson, now in the NBA. Those guys and others did a great job in giving back to our young people on this past Saturday. And to Darrell Hudson and the Parker High School staff, you've had a lot of events, even the one that Councilor Tyson was affiliated with, but the celebrity basketball game was packed wall to wall and each student that came to the park to get their supplies got a ticket to that game and they were able to see the best of the best at the highest level. Matter of fact, DeMarcus Cousins had 91 points in that game and Eric Bledsoe had, I think, 83. So it was a close game, good effort, good look for the city of Birmingham and I commend those young men that make it to the big leagues to come back and they give to their community to make a difference. That is my announcements. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Central City Neighborhood meets Tuesday, August 18th from 6:00 to 7:00. Lynn Henley Library, Richard Arrington Jr. Boulevard Auditorium. Graymount meets Wednesday, August 19th from 5:00 to 6:30 at Smithfield Library. Councilors, if you're scheduled for meets, please join me on this Thursday, 13th, at the Nike showroom and I'll give you the address and all that. We'll be doing some Nike community outreach where we'll be presenting some products to Parker High School and the after-school care program for the athletics. And I know a lot of, it said 10:30 a.m. and so it's, it's very timely for the athletic programs of Parker and the after-school, so please join me because we've partnered with Nike to give them some, just to help them, help the program. We have a motion to adjourn.
So move?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
This meeting is adjourned.
The answer to, when we should expect the answer to the questions, I would...